I think we're live, y'all.
Are we are live?
Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting for our May meeting. As you can see, things are a little bit different tonight, just as I'm sure things are different in your life and at your house. We are practicing our social distancing here in the council chambers and we also have folks that are going to be speaking at the meeting out in the hallway and they are social distancing as well. Tonight, we have two people under citizens comments before we move into our meeting agenda. And our first individual is Shawn Brenner at 108 Oak Hill Drive. Okay, so Shawn is not here. So we will now move on to our second citizens comments. Davinia Tompkins?
She's coming in.
Coming in. Okay. Is this Ms. Tompkins? Hi, are you Ms. Tompkins?
I am.
Great. So if you will just state your name and your address and then you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, I also have documentation for the council.
Great, okay. Jeff, will you grab that for us?
There's a set for each person.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It says on here that I'm for air conditioning requirement for rental units. That is true. That's an old complaint that I had. Our family votes and we teach our children to vote at every single election to the annoyance of our children at times, but I'm a firm believer in the democratic process of America and this is the only way that you get change. In August of 2014, I believe it was, we woke up sweating in our beds on a Sunday morning before we were to get ready to go to church and after many months of arguing back and forth with the office of the Ridgemont apartment complex next door to the Smyrna High School, we were accused of not knowing the difference between air conditioning and heating, doing it on purpose, breaking the unit on purpose, we decided to move. And I think that's completely irresponsible and should not be tolerated. If you can't leave a dog in a car in the grocery store while you go shop, you shouldn't be allowed to leave a family to sweat on the second floor of an apartment, period. That's all I have to say about that. Now, my real complaint and the documentation that you received today is because I received a ticket for neglecting to stop at a stop sign on Valentine's Day of this year. It was $143.75 and after you read what I typed up as a timeline of what happened that evening, I'm hoping that you'll be as appalled as I was. This young woman was so offensive to me. She just offended every sensibility that I have to the point that I filed for contesting of that ticket and to speak tonight. It was disrespectful. It was condescending. I was treated like a criminal. I don't, this is the only ticket I have in the time between 16 years old driving and 51 today. I always followed the traffic laws and if she had run my license like she said that I, that she did, she would have seen that. I'm a former teacher. I have no background. I mean, that's, it's just as plain as it gets. So I, and when I told her that I was a teacher, a former teacher, she said that that was of no concern to her. So I looked at her blankly and said that it was of no concern to me that she's a police officer. I mean, how disrespectful. In any case, my point to you guys and that I think it should be addressed in further meetings if possible, is that it's $143.75 to run a stop sign in Smyrna, but in Murfreesboro, a much bigger city, it's only $97.
Three minutes, Mayor.
Did you know that?
Okay, Ms. Tompkins, thank you so much. And just to let you know, when I knew that you were coming tonight, I asked our town manager to pull the tape for your, for your stop. And Brian, you're, is there anything you want to say or I know you'd be happy to meet with her because I think there may be some discrepancies.
I'd be happy to meet with her and review the tape.
I put in a complaint against this young lady and her sergeant did nothing.
Yes, ma'am. I think there's some discrepancies in your side of the story and the officer's side of the story and I've viewed both.
I'm sure there are.
Well, my officer did not curse you.
I didn't say she did. She accused me of trying to murder a child.
No, no, what she told you was, and we'll be happy to sit down and talk about this, but basically she said by running that stop sign, you could have killed someone. She didn't say you murdered anybody.
No, she said I could have murdered someone.
Yes, ma'am. Let's just.
Yeah, and you are welcome, but you're welcome to come in. We'll be happy to let you sit down and view the tape. But I also wanted, just to make sure everybody understood that the actual, the violation for running the stop sign was $50. The remaining portion is for court cost and that sort of thing.
I didn't go to court. I paid it.
But there's cost to process.
But there's still court cost to process.
I didn't go to court.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for coming in and we will, and Brian, if you want to.
It's also $46.75 more than Murfreesboro.
Thank you so much for coming in. Okay, we will move on into our meeting agenda and I will call this meeting to order. And Jerry, I think you're up for prayer tonight. Are you ready for that? And Rex Gaither, you're going to do our pledge. If everyone will stand with us, please.
Father of heaven, we're so thankful for this day, Lord. We're so thankful for the blessings that you give us, Father. We thank you that we can live in a country that's free, Lord, and we can, we can speak our mind and we just, we're so thankful for, for this country, Lord. Father, we are going through some tough times right now. Families are going through hard times, Father, with these, with this virus, Lord, and the world's going in a hard time and we just, I just pray that you'll bless us, be with us through this, Father. Lord, we're thankful for those that are helping and serving, our healthcare workers, our police, our fire, all those that are getting involved, Lord. And we thank you for our town employees that have, have worked so hard through this to help us well, Father. Lord, we just pray now as we go through this meeting, Lord, that you'll just give us the wisdom to make the right decisions, Father, and just continue to bless us, Lord. And I just pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Place flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jerry and Rex. Ms. Diane, if you'll do roll call.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Okay, we will, Ms. Diane, you looked like a rock star there singing that you're going to sing. Okay, we will move on to item three, which is our approval or corrections of the minutes of the April 13th, 2020 and the April 14th, 2020 meetings. Any additions or corrections from anyone? This is kind of odd.
Move to approve the minutes, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Correspondents and communications, Brian?
None this evening, Mayor.
Awards or recognitions?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda and our consent agenda are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters and don't necessarily need discussion or an individual vote, but if there is an item that a council member would like to vote on individually, we can do that. I always like to read the consent agenda just so that those here at Town Hall, as well as those watching on TV, know exactly what we're voting on. So if you will bear with me, we will read through the consent agenda. First item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Solitude Lake Management relative to the pond maintenance at J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School Park. Item B is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Galls Incorporated relative to the police department uniforms. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Bush Construction relative to the installation of gas mains and services. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute contracts with the following relative to the chemicals at the wastewater treatment plants. At the wastewater and water treatment plants, the wastewater, at the water treatment plant is carb use, calcium oxide lime, Univar hydrofluoric silic acid fluoride and sodium chloride, salt, Calgon Carbon Corporation, powder activated carbon, ADC is calcium thioculfate. At the wastewater treatment plant, from NACIM, we have liquid aluminum sulfate. Then item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute renewal contracts with the following relative to the chemicals at the water and wastewater treatment plants. At the water treatment plant, Chemtrade, the polyaluminum hydrochloride, ADC, sodium orthopoliphosphate, Aquamag, sodium hydroxide, hydrogen peroxide and potassium permanganate. At Dico is sodium hypochlorite. Hawkins is citric acid. SNF polidone is clerfolic C318. Gulburton is aluminum chlorohydrate, GC850 and Nexair is carbon dioxide. At the wastewater treatment plant, SNF polidone is emulsion polymer. Then, item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with IM and E relative to the mechanical maintenance for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract addendum with Jones Brothers Incorporated relative to placing fill material at the firing range from Enon Springs West job site. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with Dempsey-Dilling and Associates relative to the construction engineering services for Cedarstone Park. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Barton Lawn Care relative to mowing of park properties. And item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sweeping Corp. of America relative to the annual street sweeping. Any questions or an item that council would like to pull off and discuss individually?
I have two, Mayor. G and H, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, questions, are you going to just pull them off? You going to pull them off?
I have questions.
Questions, okay.
I'm prepared.
Okay?
Okay. On the G item for Jones Brothers.
Yes.
What was the original 120 hours for the dozer use for?
That was the first part. We've been working with them as we had fill materials left at Enon Springs and some different job sites to finish, so this is the last piece of that project.
So they're going to be taking that fill that they moved?
They're taking fill from their sites.
And they're bringing it to the range.
Moving it out to the range and then we're paying $120 an hour for the dozer. This last piece is about $24,000 and that will complete that project. All we'll have to do is, Streets Department will actually go out there and seed and straw it and get it ready for the range to be operable.
Okay, so it's going to be 175 hours for the completion of the range itself, but they haven't actually started on that part. The first 120 hours was just to move it from where it was located.
Well, no, that's, that's an ongoing project. We, we knew how much fill we had. The first piece of that was a project they were working on and they had that much fill, so we went ahead and contracted for that. So now we've got more fill available and this will finish out that project.
Okay, okay.
So almost like it was done in two legs, just we had to wait on the materials to be available.
Okay. Okay, and on the, the next one, the H, how much more time, since we went over the 300-day timeframe, how much more do we go?
We project right now to still be under the total budget for the park, but they did go over, so there will be some liquidated damages that will offset some of these expenses that we're asking to include on Dempsey-Dilling. So the overall project will still be under budget, but because of the contractor saying construction, because the weather was late in completion, we had to pay Dempsey-Dilling, the CEI. We felt like we needed to keep them on the project to make sure everything was being done properly, so.
Okay, so it's going to offset?
It'll offset. There will be liquidated damages.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Good, okay. So any other questions or about anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, Mayor, I just got a question. On I, on the lawn service now, is this a change? This, we used to have somebody else, is that correct?
Yes, yes. Let me tell you what happened. We, we went out for bid. We had a company that, that gave us a lower bid. We're not happy with their work. They're not meeting our expectations. They're a company out of Franklin and they were over here doing some of the schools and they thought they could pick up some of the parks and, and meet our expectations and they did not do it. So Barton is who we've used in the past and Barton is doing some other sections of the town for us. They could pick this back up, so it's, it's going to cost us a little more money, but we're going to get the proper service.
So basically, we took Barton's bid that they, that they gave, the original time, is that correct?
Yes, we reverted back to their original bid.
Well, and I just want to say in regards to that, I appreciate the fact that we look for quality service. We don't just look for the cheapest thing because sometimes you get what you pay for.
And they asked to be released from the contract. They said, "We just can't keep up." We didn't realize what this project was going to entail.
Well, in fact, they said that they bid it too low in, in the owners of this company's own words.
Right.
So that tells you something right there.
Yep. Okay, anything else for consent agenda? Then do I have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to old business. We have six public hearings tonight and just so you all know and to remind people when they come in for the public hearing, if they would like to speak for or against an item, we ask that they state their name, their address, and if they are here on behalf of someone, to state who they're here on behalf of. And then Ms. Diane will start the three minutes and they will have three minutes to address the council. So our first public hearing tonight is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 33, Parshall 100.00 and 101.00. Kevin, if we can see you back there in the outfield.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the Plan of Services for the Annexation, which is the next item on your agenda for two parcels of land on Rocky Fork Road area. Proposed to be annexed, contains approximately 91.33 acres. This puts in writing all services that the town will be providing upon effective date of annexation, which in this location, the town will be providing all services in this area as this does lie within our water service boundary. The planning commission did review this plan of service and did recommend approval unanimously.
Okay, questions for Kevin on the plan of services for this? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against the plan of services for this item.
No, no, no one at this time, Mayor.
No one at this time. So I will close the public hearing and I will go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve Plan of Services.
A motion to approve the Plan of Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on Plan of Services? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our second, second public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD and C2 zoning with the Enon Springs Gateway Overlay District of properties located on Tax Map 33, Parshall 100.00 and 101.00, containing approximately 91.5 acres. It's requested by Jerry Butler on behalf of Marshall L. Andrews, Senior, and Betty Andrews and the properties are located west of Interstate 24 at 3782 Rocky Fork Road. This is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this annexation and zoning request is for two separate tracts of land that do total about 91 and a half acres. The land use plan, the current land use plan would support commercial development in this area and the proposed land use plan would support a gateway character here with a mix of commercial uses and high multifamily and strategic locations. Founding zoning is a mix of RM in the county and R1 and R3 in town. Again, as we stated earlier, the town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. The proposed PRD would be located on 60 acres of the total development. That residential development would contain 134 single-family lots and 160 townhouses. Access would be from the villages of Green Tree Development at Green Tree Drive and Fort Two Trail. Green Tree Drive would be extended through the development as a collector's treat. There would also be a temporary access road built to provide access to Rocky Fork Road for this development. That would be a temporary private road that would, would allow for access back to Rocky Fork Road for emergency services as well as for the students who will be living in this development would be zoned for Rocky Fork and/or Stewart Creek Schools. I think one of, one of the elementary, one middle, I can't remember which is which. So they would obviously, for access to the schools, would want to come to the south rather than go all the way back to Rock Springs Road and around. I did attach the proposed development plan that details the various items within that PRD. The remaining 31 and a half acres would be zone C2. The Enon Springs Gateway Overlay District would also be extended to these parcels. The planning commission did recommend approval with three conditions. One, to submit a traffic study for the subdivision, account for the existing approved project, which is the existing Green Tree project, and include Highwood Boulevard and Blair Road intersections with the Rock Springs Road part of that study. Sewer must come from the proposed Olive Branch Gravity Line. A temporary pump station is allowed until such time as the Olive Branch Gravity Line is completed. And then available fire flow is 1,200 gallons per minute at 20 PSI, which is adequate for the residential portion of this development, but development of the commercial area will require installation of the 12-inch water line under I-24 for adequate fire flow. And that's what I have, Mayor.
You good?
You're good.
Any questions or comments for Kevin before we move on to the public hearing?
The traffic study will be done before they come with any developments, is that correct?
Right. They would have to, as part of the, probably that preliminary plat, first, which would be the first thing I would assume would happen before, that would be phase one, would be the, the single-family portion of it. This is not the best time to do a traffic study just because the traffic conditions right now are not normal, but yeah, we would want to see that traffic study in the, in the very beginning part of this.
Kevin, I think you've reviewed it both ways and you're comfortable with the amount of commercial property that's being set aside here?
Yes.
With potential interchange coming in either location, if we're okay?
Yes, yes.
So I had some, some concerns as well with the layout. Mine wasn't with the road. Mine was with the actual layout that we approved. I actually thought I was looking, I thought I was looking at one of the, a different development layout when we voted on this the last time. So my understanding is what you have said that you're willing to live with is that the townhomes would be side by side with where the single families would start. Is that correct?
Yes, this, this proposal is to have the PRD have the single-family and multifamily part of it. The, the townhome portion of this will be closer to, for the most part, would be the, what would be a budding interstate and then the single-family would be to the west.
Okay, and so it's not the situation where we were, we were looking at doing commercial, then multifamily, and then the single-family behind it. We're looking at this being adjacent to one another now and you're?
Yes, the, the commercial, this, the, the townhomes and the multi, or the single-family were going to be adjacent to one another under the old plan as well. This would have some commercial adjacent to, to some of the single-family as well. This proposal, this proposal actually increased the commercial piece by about an acre and a half. It was only about 30 acres before. And so this plan meets our, our overlay plan and I have no issues with the plan that's been presented to you.
Okay.
I think one of the things too, as I, as I listen to you now and the conversation we had the other day, there's really nothing in the overlay that causes it to be stacked.
I understand that there's, it's not anything in the overlay. We just had discussed how we would like to see this, how the land develop, how, and, so that was my, my mindset for when I looked at this, is that when they first, when the developer first proposed it, and I don't think you have this on the screen at the moment, but there was multifamily and then single-family. And now it's adjacent to one another. That's the one that you're showing there. And so it was different than what I envisioned that we were approving. So that's, that's what I have a concern with because I want to be consistent in what we decide as far as what the developments look like. And I know we can't, I know we can't make everyone do developments the way we want them to do. That is, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that I think that we need to be consistent in how we approve the developments as they come. And so I'm a little concerned with that.
Yeah, and we have other developments that, that are done like this and I, you know, I just want to make sure you use the term that we accepted. We're not accepting something as a lesser product. This is still meets that overlay. That's what I want to make sure, so going forward, if we have this again, you understand that, you know, those, those can be stacked, they can be side by side, those kind of things. We don't really have a, the overlay doesn't restrict those abilities.
No, and I understand that.
I just want to make sure.
I understand that it doesn't restrict it. I just, in my, in my mind, how we would, how I wanted to see, I'll say, how I wanted to see the development progress is if we were looking at the commercial, then the multifamily, then single-family.
Right.
Rather than it being adjacent to one another.
Okay.
Well, and, and I think what you're not seeing, because it's not up there, when we had original discussions about this, was the fact that in that triangular shape there, there was actually a parcel that was brought to us originally as C2. You talking about the triangle shape, it's just not, no colored. Correct. The non-colored one, that it was brought to us as commercial, but because we were trying to work through the process of what the mix would be as far as land, commercial to residential, that we, I'm trying to remember, Mark, if we deferred it or just voted no at the time. I don't remember.
I think we voted no because when this development first came in, it was recommended by planning commission to deny it and so it didn't make any sense to recommend that triangular piece if this wasn't part of it. And they have not come back and requested annexation again.
And this, so in fact, there would have been some commercial that blended to the higher density to the lower density as you, as you go, if we looked at it from that angle. But the other thing that we considered at this point in time is that we felt like the townhomes being close to 24 there and, you know, the interchange would serve as a better buffer to the single-family homes as one. And two, when we looked at the layout this way, just from a traffic flow perspective, it seemed to flow better this way. So that was what we considered, you know, from the planning perspective when we ultimately approved this. And this was the third rendition of this because it, it came to us a total of three times before we actually approved it. And the biggest part of the approval process was trying to figure out what type of interchange and what the potential placement of the interchange would be. And in doing so, would that still protect and preserve that commercial element of it? And ultimately staff reckon, you know, gave us two divergent diamonds, which they firmly believe will be how it will work as an interchange.
Yeah.
And there's actually two positions of it.
And this is the, you know, the existing bridge and this is the, if it moves south or?
Do you have the, that's the one, yeah. And so from, when we saw that and when staff was satisfied and made the recommendation at that point as a, a planning commission, we, we voted to approve it, so. And just to tag on to that, Tim, I know from a planning, from the planning commission's perspective, one of the things we wanted to assure ourselves is we get it right.
Right.
Right, because that, that's such an important piece of real estate out there for the town. And we did have them come back a couple of times with some tweaks and things that we asked them to look at. The last time they came in, they brought in exactly what the staff had asked for and what we recommended and therefore it met everything and that's why we, I think that's why we as a planning commission felt comfortable with it and decided to go forward with it as it, as it's presented.
And just so you all know, I've had quite a bit of conversation with Brian and with Kevin and Todd. Kevin and Todd. In looking at the interchange, whichever place that it ends up being, they fully understand and know that we've got to make sure we protect the commercial, because if it's going to move from what it currently is, it would move south more towards Murphysboro, which then means it's really going to affect more of the property on the, on the other side, on the le, yes. So...
And just so happens, we have a conversation tomorrow with some of the folks looking at the Lee Properties.
And that's something I would ask the two of you, being on, being our representatives on the planning commission, is you all know what we as a council are looking for. And I think we've had quite a bit of discussion, and I appreciate the fact that you all have worked really hard with this developer and somewhat held their feet to the fire that to get this project to move forward, they have to do the things that we as a town wanted to see. And I know that there's been back and forth, and to me, this is the way the process should work, so.
I remember one of the last things their engineer said before he sat down on the last, the last time they were here, he said, "We listened." And then, of course, staff made that recommendation that this is what we're looking for, and that's, I think that's where we found our confidence.
Well, and, and I totally understand where you're coming from with the stacking process, and, and I think you have to look at each parcel individually.
You do.
Because, I mean, when you look at having twenty-four there, yeah, it may be a better fit to put the multifamily that backs up there to somewhat be a buffer. So I think it's what we've asked for and what we were looking for in the overlay. So any other questions for Kevin before we move into the public hearing? Nope. Okay. Then I will go to the public to see if there is anyone here to speak for or against this item.
No one at this time there.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes with one against. Okay, we will move on to item C, which is a consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance twenty dash oh seven relative to the annexation and PRD and C2 zoning with the Enid Springs Gateway Overlay District of properties located on tax map thirty-three, parcels one hundred point zero zero and one oh one point zero zero. Do I have a motion?
So move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on tax map fifty-one, parcels five point zero zero and six point zero zero. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the plan of services. The next three or four items are all related to this one development, the Gwen Farms development. The plan of services is for tax map fifty-one, parcels five and six, which is on the map that's in front of you there, highlighted, the parcels highlighted in yellow. It's about thirty point eight acres. The plan of services, as reviewed by the planning commission, did state that the water provider here is Consolidated Utility District, because that was the case at the time. And so however, that, the CUD board, as we discussed this last month at your council meeting, the CUD board has voted to cede this, that's thirty point eight acres to the town, and that is on your agenda later on to ratify that part of, or the council, or the town's portion of that agreement. And so the plan of services here would actually, would need to be, reflect the fact that the town would be providing water services here. And so, so the town would be providing all services, and the planning commission did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Comments? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against the plan of services for this project.
No one at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no one here to speak, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll now go on to our next public hearing, item E, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of properties located on tax map fifty-one, parcels five point zero zero and six point zero zero, containing approximately thirty point eight acres. It's requested by Suncrest Real Estate on behalf of Stanley Holt and Barbara Ann Harris. The properties are located at sixty-nine fourteen Lee Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'll go ahead and just kind of address the entire development, just to these next couple items with just this one report, since they're all so related to one another. The, again, this is the annexation portion of this, which is the, again, the two parcels highlighted in yellow. The requested zoning is PRD. The land use plan would support low-density residential development of zero to four units per acre in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R3 in town, and RM in the county, and then also the, to join in, for these parcels is the PRD, the Gwen Farms, existing Gwen Farms PRD. Again, the town would be providing all services here pending the approval of the agreement tonight. The proposed PRD is for residential development, containing a total of six hundred and thirty-nine residential units, broken down between single-family and townhouses. Access would be from two separate entrances onto Rock Springs Road with a connection to Lee Road as well in this new annex area. The existing PRD had five hundred and forty residential units, broken down between single-family and townhouses. So it is an increase of ninety-nine total units for the overall total development. The original PRD did have lesser setbacks than what we now would require in PRDs on the front and side. The developer did request to keep those, and the planning commission did recommend approval utilizing those existing setbacks, as they had already submitted plats and had plat approvals with those existing setbacks. Did attach the proposed development plan. Nothing is changing with regards to the types of houses, the size of those homes, or the materials that was going to be used or anything like that. It's just an increase in the amount and increasing property. And then, and then just moving it around as far as where those units would be built are somewhat different than what they were on the original PRD. The planning commission did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. One was to amend the design of the entrance to Dale Drive, which is the easternmost entrance off of Rock Springs Road, to allow for fire truck access without leaving the pavement of the roadway. That has really been addressed with the supplemental, the preliminary plat for that phase. They haven't looked at that and haven't addressed that. And then to show a two-car parking path for each townhouse. The original PRD did have that, this PRD did eliminate that, and so we did, that was a condition to the approval. They will have to have two cars parking path for each townhouse, which is consistent with the existing approved PRD. Again, planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
With this new annexation, the sewer beyond the Rock Springs trunk?
I think part of it will be. I think eventually, once the southern part, I think, will be, my understanding, will be using the Olive Branch line.
Because the ridge runs right, right about through the middle there, I think, doesn't it?
Right.
Okay, seeing no other questions, then we will go to the public to see if there is anyone here to speak for or against item E.
We do have some folks, Mayor.
Good evening. If you will state your name, address, and then if you're here, representing anybody.
Good evening, Rob Mulchon, SEC. Here representing the Suncrest Realty on that side. Just to kind of reiterate what Kevin said, this is more or less the annexation portion for the additional property, which is the Harris property, which is south of the previously approved Gwen Farms PRD. We're looking, this is going to provide an opportunity for a new connection point back to Lee Road, so we're actually going to more or less create a, a good thoroughfare connection between Rock Springs Road and Lee Road with this development. So the previous plan kind of fell short on that without the Harris property. When we came forth with the Gwen property, the Harrises felt that, you know, this, you know, they were ready to move on in life and wanted to move out of the property, and they offered us the opportunity to purchase their property, and that offered us and the city the opportunity to provide a connection between these two major east-west roadways on that side. So it also allowed us to more or less look at the plan in general in regards to some of the topographic constraints we had with the original plan, where we had the townhomes more or less centered in the middle of the Gwen property, which was about the top of the ridge line, which was topographically challenging as we got more into engineering portion of this. So the Harris property allowed us more topographical allowable property to move the townhomes down to the south on that side and get us where it's going to be a lot easier for us to build the townhomes versus where it was originally approved on that side. So we're looking at that as being an opportunity there. In regards to the question from Commissioner Cole, the sewer itself, yes, will be two different districts. One will be to the northern portion, will go back to Rock Springs, and one will be going down to the new Olive Branch trunk line. There is a ridge line, as you said, running more or less down the middle of this on that side, so we'll be, be two different sewer sheds more or less on that side. And we also work with CUD in regards to getting the water services fully within the Town of Smyrna for this project, so the Town of Smyrna will take care of all services within the overall development on that side, so. I'm available for any questions now, or I have a couple of public hearing.
When you started talking, you talked about a thoroughfare between Rock Springs and Lee Road, is that, did I hear that?
It's not, it's not a direct thoroughfare. I just, more or less, what we were providing is that we, the new connection point to Lee Road allows us to connect, bring the roadway from Lee Road into our development, and allows traffic to move from Lee Road up to Rock Springs. It's not a direct connection. We do have an offset in there, so we do help slow down the meandering, you know, make, created somewhat of an offset meandering system through our street structure to slow down traffic. So it doesn't become a prominent, you know, think Montgomery Way, we're trying to do something that's going to be a little bit opposite of that, but still allow people to get from Lee Road to Rock Springs Road on that side.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
No one else? That's it?
Okay, no one else to speak for or against this item? I will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance twenty dash zero eight relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of properties located on tax map fifty-one, parcels five point zero zero and six point zero zero. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G, public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map thirty-two, parcel twenty point zero zero and tax map fifty-one, parcel seven point zero zero, to amend the existing PRD requested by Suncrest Real Estate and Land. The properties contain approximately one hundred and ninety point five acres and are located at forty-six seventy-five Rock Springs Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the same development. There's nothing new additionally to add. This is just for, to amend the existing area that's already within the town, so it has to be a separate ordinance, because it's not, we've already annexed this parcel, so. But it is, I don't have anything more to add. Same conditions, same numbers as far as the number of units and all that, it goes with the annexation request we just discussed.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this? Seeing none, we will go to the public to see if there is anyone here to speak for or against this item.
Hold on just a minute. Nothing, no one at this time.
Okay, there is no one to speak on this public hearing, so I'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to our last public hearing tonight, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the Town of Smyrna zoning ordinance to amend Article Three, Section three point one zero zero, accessory use regulations relative to the accessory buildings used for agricultural purposes, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This would, was requested by citizen property owner, Rob Thompson, at six oh two Rock Springs Road. I did attach his letter of request to, in your packet. This amendment would change the provisions of the zoning ordinance for detached accessory buildings that are used for agricultural purposes. This would remove any size limitations, but it would require a parcel to be at least fifteen acres in size and on the green belt, as an active farm, before these rules would be applied. It would still require such structures to be located at least ten feet from each side of rear property line and behind the principal structure. The planning commission did review these proposed amendments and did recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin on this? Any comments? Okay, then we will go to our public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item.
No one.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Couple items under new business. Our first is our planning commission report, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-four G, Group A, parcel one point zero zero, to amend the existing PRD requested by Robert Latimer. The property contains approximately one point four or five acres and is located at six fifty-five through six seventy-three South Lowry Street, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an amendment request for the existing approved PRD that's located here on South Lowry. It also has road frontage on South Side Drive and Stewart Drive. The land use plan would support commercial development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, C3, and the South Side PRD, which is to the rear. It also does lie within the Lowry Street Overlay District. This approved PRD allows for residential development containing twenty-one townhouses. Access would be from entrances on both Stewart Drive and South Side Drive, no access, direct access to South Lowry Street. The proposed amendment is to allow for a building height up to fifty feet, where the original PRD allowed for a building height up to forty. There are no other proposed changes. The number of units is not changing, the amount of open space, nothing else is changing, it's just the height of the building. Requested change has arisen after, after the project engineer began developing the grading plans for the site. A part of that grading plan included a retaining wall that extended into a utility easement and on top of an existing eighteen-inch town water line that was within that easement. Our utility staff recommended against that, and so a revised grading plan was undertaken. They did want to keep that same basic footprint, and so the developer did have some grade they had to make up, and so how they have requested to do that is to basically make it up that difference within the building itself. And so that extra height that we're talking about is actually by lowering the finished floor of the building on the front side, on the Lowry Street side. So the height is actually going to be on the Lowry Street side. The height on the back of the building, where the parking lot is, is really not changing at all from the overgrading, so. Yeah, I did attach the existing approved PRD documents, so you would have that for reference. reference. Also did include as well the proposed elevations for the buildings with, that are at the higher, the taller height. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Kevin, I mean, Mark or Tim, anything you want to add?
Not really, Mayor. This just kind of made the most sense to stay off the utility and the retaining wall issues that the developer was having. I know back when we initially looked at this, a couple of questions came up about design and trim work and things that will be facing Lowry Street, and we asked that specific question to make sure those would still be intact, and they confirmed that they would be.
Tim, anything?
No, I think Mark covered it, and again, I think this is in response to what our staff asked to do, and it makes sense to get off that water line there.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of Mark, Tim, or Kevin? Okay, seeing none, then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will now move on to item B, a package liquor board report. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an addendum to the interlocal water service boundary agreement with CUD.
Mayor, you've got it in your packet that, we spoke about this on the Gwynn Farms property. This is where CUD has voted to give us the water privileges on that 30 acres on the backside on Lee Road, so we'll be the provider for all of the Gwynn Farms property at this time.
Anybody have any questions about that agreement? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item D, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a grant application with the U.S. Department of Justice relative to the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. Is that Rex or you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's Rex.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program will provide funding to assist in preventing, preparing for, and responding to the coronavirus. The town is eligible for $42,855. Chief Culberson has made a list of personal protective equipment and supplies needed to respond to the coronavirus, and he has submitted a list, and we have that in your packet, and the grant application must be submitted by May 29, 2020. And if we are approved, the contract, when it's available, we'll submit that to legal and let them review that. We just ask that you would allow us to pursue this grant.
Questions for Rex on this?
Why wouldn't we allow you? Go get some money.
That's right, bring us some money. Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the necessary documents relative to fiscal year 21, property casualty and workers' comp excess insurance. Ms. Kay, how are you this morning, this afternoon, evening?
Good, thank you.
I'll get it right one of these times.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the annual premium for the casualty and workers' comp reinsurance. The premium will live in effect for the fiscal year of 21.
Okay, questions? Okay, then do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item F, consideration of resolution relative to the acceptance of the State of Tennessee grant funds. Rex? Oh, Jeff?
Actually.
Who wants it? Hot potatoes.
Rex is actually filling out the application itself, but this requires a resolution by the town council to accept these funds that Governor Lee has put forward for each municipality. I believe the amount that the town will be eligible for is $1,150,000 and $526,000.
Okay, questions?
Just to point out too, there are some caveats on how the money can be spent, and we've covered that in the resolution, public safety, roads, maintenance, some of those kind of things. There are some things that cannot be spent for, so we have developed that, the $1,150,000 into our budget, so.
Which we know that we're going to need.
Yes.
Just curious, is this based on the current census or a future census?
This was based on the current census, and these were dollars that the governor announced back in January. It is state of the, state address that was coming, so they are moving forward with those funds.
When will that be released?
July.
July 1st?
July 1st.
Okay.
But we have to be prepared to, we have to have the resolution and some other stuff in place.
Questions for Rex, or Brian, or Jeff?
Not a question, but really it shows another reason to count everybody, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
Okay, seeing no other questions, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item G, which is consideration of the submission of the public debt notice to the Comptroller of the Treasury. Rex?
Yes, ma'am. The comptroller requires public debt incurred by the town to be announced at a public meeting. This requires no council action, just the mayor's signature on the form. I have attached the form, CT 0253, related to the $18 million clean water state revolving fund loan, and it will be submitted to the Office of State and Local Finance.
Okay, no action is required on this, just an announcement made, but does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item H, which is consideration of an ordinance for adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, and this is a first reading. And Rex, I guess it's your turn to sing. Ms. Diane's had her chance, and I know you've been practicing. Am I right?
I'm ready to go.
He's got a little dance move ready.
Oh, he's getting his dance moves ready.
I'm ready to go.
Okay. We know you, we honestly know how hard you guys have worked on it, so, and had quite a bit of discussion, just so the public understands. We've had quite a bit of discussion at our retreat, as well as information that Brian has been keeping us up to date as they've been going through the process. We do understand that with all that's going on, they're going to be, as, it's a fluid document, and there will probably be some changes as we go through the year based on revenues coming in or revenues not coming in. So Rex, once you get your microphone all set up? We good?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
The ordinance and detailed budget for fiscal year 2021 are submitted for your consideration. I have attached the changes from retreat to first read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the retreat. This reflects the governor's local government support grant of $1,150,400 and some formula corrections on pay data to various funds. And at this time, I'd like to give a little overview of the budget. The complete budget is located at our website, townofsmyrna.org/departments/finance. The slides we will see tonight are summarized to fit into the screen for viewing, and we'll get started. The budget process started in November of 2019. Brian, Todd, Jeff, and myself asked for justification on each line item as we met with the department heads. We discussed personnel, line items, travel, and capital project requests. The budget was prepared based on the economic conditions that existed at the time. The budget had been finalized around the first week of March. Then the ramifications of the virus hit, social distancing, safer at home policies, and business lockdowns were implemented, and we made the decision to recommend the prepared budget to the mayor and council, and presented that to you at the budget retreat. The town manager will approve all personnel and capital expenditures in fiscal year 2021. This provides flexibility in controlling expenditures as we monitor how the revenues are coming in. Everyone is hoping for a speedy economic recovery, and this approach will allow us to implement the budget as our economy improves. I would like to reference some highlights from a policy brief from the University of Tennessee entitled "Impact of COVID-19 on Local Government Finances." The depth of this recession will exceed the Great Recession and the Great Depression. But unlike those devastating periods, the COVID-19 recession will be much shorter duration. They also went on to say that our general expectation as of this writing is for negative revenue performance through fiscal year 2020, followed by flat revenues in fiscal year 2021 before resuming to trend. The budget that we're presenting is balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures in the general fund. Our goal is to finish the year with a balanced budget, but obviously there will be a lot of challenges in reaching this goal. Some of the new personnel that we discussed, and it was four full-time police officer trainees in the police department, coast department, a building inspector, that's to go with the general fund. We had some position in the other funds, and at the very bottom, there's a breakdown between the full-time, part-time, and seasonal, and the cost associated with each of those. Obviously, as we monitor the budget, the police officer trainees will take the highest priority as we are able to move forward when and if the revenues come in.
Can I ask something on that real quick? And this may just be something you need to find out. Is the academy closed, and do we know how long the academy is going to be closed?
I'm not sure. The fire academy just opened back up. I'm not sure what the process.
I heard that the police academy was, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it is, but I know the governor's put out another, two orders today that deal with the suspension of those timelines for fire and police training.
Oh, they did? Okay. I've not seen those, so, okay, I was just curious.
35 or 36.
35 and 36.
When does the addition to the wastewater plant go online?
It will go online, I think that's a 36-month project, and we're about six months into it, so we're still a ways out.
Gotcha.
The next slide is a general fund summary. Just to refresh your memory, the top row up there, we start off with the description, and then we go into actual numbers for 2018 and 19, and then what we have budgeted for 20, what we're estimating for 20, and what we're recommending to you to vote on. Operating revenues is the, is a blue line, it's at $43.8 million. Our total expenditures, $43.8 million. So as you can see, very little amount of surplus, and our, you add that to our beginning fund balance and the ending fund balance, we're projecting would be a little bit over $33 million, and that's 75.24% of our projected revenues.
Rex, the estimated for 1920 still includes at least two months of unknowns, right? We're still estimating revenue?
Very much unknown, yes.
And looking at those things, a good bit of it would be relatively consistent outside of golf parks and the events center, correct?
The, if you, if you look at the, at the total expenditures and revenues, we've gone back to mid-18 and mid-19 actual numbers. So we've gone back a few years in determining our budget. Hopefully, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen just yet, how long or how deep this recession is going to be, but we're pretty optimistic that we'll be able to manage our way through it. Our next slide is our major sources of general fund revenue. Property taxes, we're hoping come in at a pretty steady rate. In lieu of taxes, that's basically Nissan and Housing Authority in town. Local sales tax, not quite as optimistic on that, or the state sales tax. And I added a slide this year of our top 10 general fund revenue sources. And like I said, I'm a little bit anxious about the local sales tax, state sales tax, business taxes. Building permits seems to be holding pretty steady at this point, and traffic and court fines and hotel motel tax are going to be significantly affected by the business lockdown that we've had. And that's five of our 10 top revenues. General fund revenues, you can see that the local sales tax in the bottom right-hand corner is our biggest producer. If you study municipal governments in Tennessee, most of them, their property tax is their number-one revenue. That's why we want to keep spending our money locally. It really helps us to keep our tax rate low and reasonable. If you combine the property tax and the local sales tax, that combines to be 55% of the General fund operating expenditures by department, you've got the police and fire at the top. If you combine both those, that's 54% of our budgeted expenditures. If you combine parks and golf, that puts us, recreation at 15%. General fund expenditures by type, personnel is 72%. Service providers have more labor costs, as that shows us, and if you would, look at the dent service at 5%. You know, if you think about your personal finances and your personal debt, if, most of us would be extremely excited to keep it at 5%. So we've done a good job with that. This slide is a general fund analysis. The green line The green line is revenues, the red line is expenditures and the blue line is fund balance. If you go down to the bottom and look at the years, fiscal year 2012, we're coming out of the, the backside of the Great Recession and you see where the red line and the green line intersect. And our revenues started coming in more than our expenditures. And from 2012 to 2017, we built our fund balance up. If you go to the top right-hand corner up there, 2020 and 2021, you can see the green line of revenues is, is flattened out. If anything, it's starting to trend down a little bit. Major capital projects in the general fund. These are, are projects that, we had several other projects, but these are the projects that we know that we're going to push forward on because they're tied to the bond proceeds money that we already have and also tied in, a lot of them are tied in with grants. So that'd be the Sam Ridley widening, G D lane engineering, a right-of-way acquisition, Lee Victory Recreation Park entrance roads, engineering and construction. The intelligent transportation system phases one and two, Larry Street Phase One and another intelligent transportation system phases three, four and five. And also Sam Ridley and Old Nashville Highway. Here's a picture of these capital projects categorized and you can see the blue shaded area is, is infrastructure and that accounts for 67% of capital project expenditures that Health, welfare and culture, the, these amounts pretty much stayed the same as the prior year. Line ball library operating projects went up a little bit and the Rutherford County Emergency Management Agency went up and that's our share of the director's salary. Now we're getting into the state street aid, which is a special revenue fund. Special revenue funds are, have specific revenues and those revenues are restricted as to what you can spend them on. Obviously, the state street aid is, is restricted for streets. The expenditures in the far right-hand column of $1,495,000. The bulk of that is for street lights and street paving that we do on an annual basis. We're projecting a surplus of a little over $216,000 and will leave us with an ending fund balance of almost $1.4 million. I look for this fund to be impacted a little bit too, but we have a fund balance, a sufficient fund balance, I think, to get us through the, the hard times. Drug fund, another special revenue fund, projecting a surplus of $22,600. And if that comes to fruition, then we think we're going to have an ending fund balance of a little bit over $327,000. Impact fee fund, another special revenue fund. This is from development fees and the expenditures here are transfers into the capital project fund to pay for the projects that are eligible to be paid out of these funds. The different categories are public safety, parks and roads. Public safety is up to, and this is at the bottom of the page, far right-hand column, about $1.8 billion. Parks, $637,000 and roads, 2.4 million. And with the roads money, we've designated that to pay for the debt service on the $20 million debt proceeds that we got in 2019. Stormwater fund is another special revenue fund. This one, if you look at the transfer to capital projects, that's 2.6 million dollars. There's a major capital project involved that accounts for most of that. That will put us into a 2.2 million deficit, but at the end of the year, we should still have $1.6 million left in that fund. As you see there, most of the expenses are capital projects at 67%. The capital projects is the, I guess, phase one of the master stormwater improvement project, which is $2 million. And the source of that financing will be revenue and fund balance. And you can see there that 91% are infrastructure-related projects. The insurance fund is, has a, projected a surplus of $121,000, kind of a break-even year. And the ending fund balance projected is $5.3 million. And when the auditor met with us here a couple of months ago, he, he was, he mentioned the insurance fund, like he was wanting us to retain a balance of about four and a half to five million dollars in there, so we're doing well there. The debt service fund, that just shows you what we're going to pay in debt service related to general obligation debt. And that's $3.5 million. This slide will show you kind of our outstanding principal balances and general obligation funds. You can see in 17 and 18, we were, we were paying the debt down. In 19, as I mentioned, we took out the $20 million bond issue that was mainly restricted to, to road projects. And now you can see that we're starting to pay that down in 20 and 21. And we have no new debt that we're projecting to take out this year. This is a schedule of maturities of bond and other indebtedness and interest requirements. If you look at the left-hand column there where he has the years and go across, you can see that for '21, '22, we've got about $3.5 million for both those years. '23 and '24, around $2.4 million. And then 2025, our debt service drops significantly. And the last column down there, that's 22 years' worth of debt service at 19.9 million. So you'd say we're, we're working our, our debt down and I'm glad we're not taking out any more this year.
What's the purpose of the '26 to '39 on there?
It just shows you the rest of the years that we've, we have debt.
That's the $20 million that have spread out.
Yeah, we're just trying to get it on the slide. We really take that information off of the schedule and the audit report.
But what you can tell looking at that is it drops down to, it's about a million, three million, five million a year after that unless we take more debt at some point. So that puts us in a pretty good position.
How are we comparing them to a lot of other cities?
That's the reason there we're rated as high as we are with Moody's and some of the others because of the financial stability we have.
Well, and I know some of us sitting on the council, some of you weren't here, I mean, we really, it was tough doing a tax increase, but I think that's exactly the reason that we had to do what we had to do for the tax increases for times like that we're going through right now. So I was just curious about the, the debt service, what others.
Capital projects fund, that's kind of an in and out. We transfer money in there and expense our major capital projects out of one fund so we can keep up with those. This slide, this one may be a little bit harder to see, but we start off in the left-hand column there with the department, then requested was at 21 point, $29.4 million. What we're recommending is 17.6 million. And the next column is the general fund. That's what we're going to pay out of current year revenues, that's $3 million. Debt proceeds related to the roads is 5.3. And state street aid's pitching in a little bit, impact fees, a little bit over a million dollars. And grants at a little bit over $8 million. So the next slide here just shows you a picture of that and gives you the percentages. So we're really, we're really taking advantage of grant money and that's at 46%. General fund, 17. Debt proceeds, that's money that we had taken out in 19 that we haven't spent yet. State street aid, 1% and impact fees, 6%. This next slide shows us what we've spent in capital projects over the last 10 years. Our number one category is highways and streets at $36.1 million, 49%. Recreation is number two at $20.1 million and that's 28%. And public safety is number three at $9.3 million. Water and wastewater fund, we are recommending a 2% water and a 3% sewer increase. And this is to pay for our capital projects. The biggest portion of that goes to the wastewater treatment plant. I think that's, construction only was, was around 35, 36 million dollars. And as you can see, we're, we're healthy there. Major sources of water and wastewater revenue. Of course, water beater sales is our largest revenue source. Wastewater fees are second at $9.6 million. What's interesting is to see the water tap fees at $900,000 and the sewer tap fees at $2.3 million. That just goes to show you where our development is going. It's going out the Humble Road area where C U D has to service the water for a lot of that property. And we have the, C U D contract is just about on its last leg. We have six months of that revenue coming in for the year and then that contract will end. And that's budgeted $500,000 for the year.
Now that's where they buy water from us, correct?
That's correct. While they're doing their upgrade, we're actually providing water.
Okay, and so we anticipate finishing their upgrade?
Their upgrade is about done.
Water and wastewater fund expenditures by type, debt service is 8%. That's extremely good. Of course, that's going to be going up as we're taking out more debt for these, these expensive capital projects that we're undertaking. And what you haven't seen on any of the other expenditure slides is the expense of depreciation. Water sewer fund is an enterprise fund where the, it's designed to make money to cover all of its expenses and it's accounted for as full accrual accounting and therefore depreciation is one of the biggest expenses that we have. This is water and sewer outstanding debt. As you can see, 17, 18 and 19, we're, we're paying our debt down. We started the wastewater treatment plant '20, it's going up. 2021 is going up some more. As Brian said, that's a three-year project, so it will go up a little bit more in 2022. The schedule of maturities of indebtedness and interest requirements in the water and sewer fund. If you take the years 2021 through 2024 and go out to the total column, you can see that's right around $5 million a year. And then in 2025, it drops down to $1.7 million. So even though we're taking on more debt, we're going to be able to absorb it rather easily in 2025, but the next few years will be a little bit tight, heavy debt service. Major capital projects in the water and sewer fund, wastewater treatment plant expansion, we're looking at $12.4 million this year. Olive branch sewer extension at $8 million. And the Ziff and Pike sewer line extension is finally going to get done after all these years.
We'll be able to see it.
You see it, you'll believe it when you see it, right?
Yes, sir. We still looking for bid letting on that this summer?
Uh, yes, they have pushed it back from June to August, but it's August 14th is bid let.
As you can see, all the capital projects in the water and sewer fund are pretty Here's our capital projects.
Can you back up just a second again? The olive branch, I mean, is that one going along as planned?
Yes, in fact, we've probably closed a little over 60% of the easements at this point. Jeff's team is doing a great job of, of working with the, of the appraisers out there and locking those down. Honestly, everybody that can sign and, and work with us are really what we have left and they're, they're not being disruptive with it. It's where they've got mortgage companies that they've got to go through to get the approval and, you know, get the process. So some of those we may have to end, end up going to condemnation just to push the mortgage companies.
Anticipated date for scratching dirt?
If Mike Strange was sitting here, he'd tell you by late summer, but I don't think we're going to make it by late summer. I'd, I'd say going into the fall, we should be in pretty good shape.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Capital projects, 91% of the expenditures there are infrastructure-related. Natural gas fund, this year we're, we're looking at a, at a break-even year. We got operating income and loss of about $58,000, which is, like I said, it's about a break-even year. We have good cash balance, fund balance built up there, so that's, we are, we would like to have a cold winter sometime in the next few years. Major sources of natural gas revenue, you can see residential, commercial and then industrial. Industrial is $4.8 million and that's just Nissan. All those numbers are kind of in line with prior years.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind, because this kind of strikes home for me, the natural gas side of the business. You know, with Nissan shut down, it is impacting the amount of gas sales we're achieving, but it also impacts what we have to buy. So there's a little bit of a balance in there in that if they're not purchasing the gas, we're not getting the revenue, but we're not having the expense to go with it. So it's not as detrimental to. detrimental to us.
Expenditures by type. As Brian was just alluding to, the natural gas resale is 58%. When your revenues are off, your major expenditure is off also. And this is a, an enterprise fund, and it has depreciation, and it's an expense of about 5% of the budget. One major capital project in that, and that's the Jefferson Pike. It says sewer line, but it should read gas line extension of $1.7 million. That'll come out of current year revenue or the net position. And 75% of capital projects are related to infrastructure. And there's a screen everybody's been looking for. The town has built up our fund balances and our cash reserves since the Great Recession. We are in good financial position going into this recession caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. That's all I got.
Rex, I think we can tell you didn't put this together last night, that you've worked kind of hard on this. So, one, I want to thank you for all the hard work you've put into the presentation, because I think you do a really great job of breaking it down where everybody can understand where we are financially. Also, I want to thank you and your staff for all you've done to put the budget together, and Brian, and department heads for everything you've done. I know that, Rex, you talked a little bit about it in the beginning on the first couple of slides, but Brian, you've talked to council about this, but let's talk to the general public about what procedures are we going through as a community with the unstable times that we have now?
Mayor, I think it comes down to, at the end of the day, managing the budget. And we do that anyway. But even more importantly this year, just because something is in the budget, the department heads are not going to be, will not have the privilege of just going in ordering that or making that happen. We're going to look at all the projects that we have that are currently funded, that were under contract. We're going to continue those. Some of the things we're doing, and you heard Rex allude to this, we've got a hiring freeze on. Any hiring has to be approved through the town manager. Not to say we won't hire some folks, it's just we're going to have to do a better job of making sure we're managing that. Also, we've cut our travel budget until we see the revenue stream come back, those kind of things. So we're doing all of those. What we're looking for, and what we've talked, and I want you to know, let me tell you something. I don't want it to sound like we've kind of pushed the department heads to say you have to do this. We've sat down as a group collectively and talked about the issues, and they're buying into what we're going to do is, next year, as we get into this budget, we're going to watch the revenue stream, we're going to watch the budget expenses. We've got things within the budget we have control over. We don't have to order that, or we can wait a certain amount of time to put that in play instead of July, or, yeah, July 1st, everything just automatically goes into the new budget. So I'm very proud that the department heads and the management staff have bought into this. And that's what we're telling you tonight is, to the community, to you as the mayor and council, our goal is to balance this budget, manage this budget. We want to continue to keep that cushion that we have built up, that we're very proud of, to work through. If we have to get into that, we're going to come back to the council and say, listen, we have to find some dollars to make certain things happen. But I think it's a team effort. Rex has done a great job, as he has for many years now, preparing this budget and his team. But I also would like to compliment not only Rex, but Jeff and myself and Todd. We're part of a group that sat down with each department head, and, you know, when you see $29 million, I believe it was asked for, and we cut it to $17 million, you can tell, we whittled on this budget. We wanted to make sure what we were asking for, we needed, we wanted to make sure that we were staying within the boundaries of being good conservative stewards of the town's tax dollars, the citizens' tax dollars. So I feel good about this budget. There's a little bit of a leap of faith. I understand that. It's a little different year. It's a little different way for us to present the budget. But we don't know. We just don't know what the tax dollar's going to do. We do know that we've already seen a drop in the hotel motel tax. That hit pretty quick. Right now, the sales tax, the reports that we're getting, because they lag 45 to 60 days, we're not really seeing some of these worst months yet. So we're going to have to wait to get through those. You know, so we're just going to, our goal will be, and our commitment to you, is that we're going to manage this budget. We're going to do everything we can to bring it in as a balanced budget.
Well, and I appreciate all of that. And I just wanted the public to know that there are unknowns out there, and we understand that there are unknowns out there, and that we're planning for those unknowns, and that we want to continue on with projects, but we also know that we're going to tighten our belt in some areas, so.
That's what we, that I don't do.
That's right. Counsel, anything from you all?
You know, Rex, every year you bring us the general fund analysis graph. And to me, I told Brian before the meeting tonight, I said, I'm sure he'll have that graph. And it really speaks to the whole presentation. That one graph says it all. So to you and your staff, to Brian, and Jeff, and Todd, and everybody else that's been involved, thank you for watching this budget the way you have. I've had a, I was actually reached out to this week by a citizen in town that I know. And his question to me was, how's your fund balance? And you know what? It's a pretty proud moment when you can tell them that we're sitting in good shape. His concern was, other municipalities aren't, and he wanted to make sure that ours was. So it's nice to know that we got people watching the bank, watching the money. Rex, I've known you a long time. You're conservative when it comes to spending money, and that's a good thing. And so thank you all for putting together a budget. Brian, thank you for involving the council in the retreat and letting us know that there may be some things come up this year much different than we've ever seen before, that we have to just kind of move and adjust with. We have to be chameleons with this budget a little bit. But I think we all see what you do and have total trust in the fact that you don't want this budget to fall any more than we do. So our citizens out there, I think, can rest assured knowing we've saved some money up for this very purpose. And we're pretty healthy compared to a lot of municipalities that aren't, so.
Yeah, to add on to that, Mary Esther mentioned earlier that the tax increase years ago is what kind of what helped us put us in this situation. And that fund balance that Mark's talking about is the reason that we can continue all of these road projects that we had already started. If we didn't have a healthy fund balance, if that tax increase hadn't happened five or six years ago when it did, or seven years ago when it did, we would not be in a position, Sam Ridley would have to halt. Jefferson Pike may not move forward. There would be some very significant impacts had you guys not had the forethought back then, and we hadn't stuck with that for the last few years, and maintained and built that fund balance the way we have. So I appreciate Rex, the hard work you've done, not just this year, but many years that you've gotten us in a situation that a downturn in the economy really isn't going to impact us much. It's going to impact us, but generally, we're not having to talk about layoffs. We're not having to talk about cutting services. We're not having to talk about stock capital projects. And that is a huge, huge benefit because of the work you've done. So really, really appreciate that. One of the things I just noticed when you were going through it, the million, $50,000 that's coming from the state, you know, a lot of municipalities may have taken that money and said, oh, this is a grant that we can use for a capital project, and started some project that they were putting on the back burner because now they have those funds. We didn't do that. We took existing capital projects that were in our budget and said, hey, we can still move forward with those and take that out of our plan. So that's exactly what you want to do. You reduce the budget by a million dollars right there just because you're being conservative, but you're also being true to the plan. And I appreciate that.
Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing else, do I have a motion to approve the budget on first reading?
I have motion to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Sir?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget passes on first reading. Itemized consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and this also is a first reading. Rex?
Mayor, the tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year 2021. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same for the prior year at 70.07 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property.
That's a good rate.
That's a pretty good deal.
Well, Rex, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. What year, how far back do you remember when you've done those graphs for our presentations? Is it less, is it more than 70 cents? It goes all the way back to what, that it's 70 cents or less? Do you remember?
You know, anytime, anybody, somebody asks me about remembering something, I know it's always going to be.
I'm almost positive it's around 1950.
1950.
1950. So I don't know many places that can say that. So I agree with what you all said. We've got a pretty good thing going here in the town of Smyrna. When you look at the services that are provided, and what you get for, in regards to public safety, what you get in regards to parks, what you get in regards to roads, lots of good things going on here in the town of Smyrna. So I think the only one lower than us in the county is Eagleville.
That's correct.
Counsel, questions or comments? Who wants to make the motion to accept the property tax rate this year?
I'm moving to approve.
The motion, do we have a second?
I'll second him.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I didn't see anything on my desk under other tonight. Do we have anything under other? Nothing under other. Rex, anything tonight?
No, ma'am.
Jeffrey L.?
I just hope all of the mothers had a great mother's day.
Good job, Jim. Brian?
Mayor, you know, I've got a couple of things. It's been a while since we've been together. We've missed a couple of our workshops and those kind of things. But just very quickly, I'll run through these. As you know, we had a great event with the Kroger folks doing testing for the COVID-19. I just want to give a shout out to Kroger, to Motlo State Community College, and the town of Smyrna Police and Fire Department, and also Kathy Farrell for making that happen. We had five days of testing. We tested, I believe, right at somewhere between 775 and 800 people over that five-day period. I did receive a really nice note, and I know the chief, fire chief, and police chief, and Kathy received one, but I just want to share this very quickly. Mr. Hercules, thank you for making this event a successful one. You have an excellent team. We appreciate you sharing your police and fire departments along with Kathy. They have been a joy to work alongside, and thank you for sharing your big little town with us. And that came from Kroger folks. And they had a, they had a good experience. We had a good experience. And we were so happy to be able to provide that service on the north end of the county. I know that the health department are doing some of these on Saturdays, and we still hope to garner maybe one of theirs down this way, either in Smyrna or Laverne, over the next couple of weeks to continue to provide that service. You know, as I thank the police and fire department and Kathy, I also want to just say thank you to all of our employees. Kathy and Brett did a great job, and I shared a video with you thanking our employees for the work, not only through this COVID-19 pandemic, but also, as some of you will remember, about a week ago on a Sunday night, we had a 20-minute storm that did, I tell people, we had a 20-minute storm that did 20 years' worth of damage. One of the most horrific as far as damage for such a short storm, and not to be a tornado that I've ever seen and witnessed in my life. But our firefighters, our street department, our police department, our dispatchers all stepped up to the plate. We were out till about 11:30. We did have a few houses without power that was not going to be able to get on that night. But for the most part, we had all the roads cleared and everybody taken care of. So I just want to say thank you to our employees for everything they do on a day-in and day-out basis. I really would like to highlight, too, the staff that I have the pleasure of working with daily, the directors, and then, of course, Jeff, Peach, our town attorney, Todd Spearman, Kathy Farrell, and Rex Gaither as our two assistant town managers and our PIO. You guys, words cannot tell you the work, the hours, the genuine care that these folks have shared for this community over the last, what, eight, almost nine weeks now. I mean, really working day, night, and just about every weekend. So I just really appreciate what they're doing, and that their heart's in the right place to serve this community. Also, very quickly, we unfortunately haven't been together in a while, but the telecommunications day was held back in April. And then we followed that up at the 1st of May with firefighters' day, and we lit up the downtown area in red, and the fire stations in red. And if you ride down Front Street tonight, and for the rest of this week, this is National Police Officers Week, and we're lighting up the area in blue. And I believe our judicial building is lit up in blue. I look forward to seeing it tonight on my way home. But again, we just thank them all so much for the work they do on a daily basis. Unfortunately, during this time of the COVID-19, we're seeing a lot of cancellations with things. And I, some of this stuff breaks my heart because it's some of the most fun things we do. But our Smyrna Youth Fire and Police Academy has been canceled. We're not going to be able to participate in that this year. Our Memorial Day event that we've taken so much pride in the last couple of years with the VFW, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to participate in that because of the COVID-19 and just the social distancing aspect and the groups gathering in a social way. I think the VFW will continue to do something there at their lodge or their facility. And I think they are still planning on putting the reef at the memorial, which I told them we would support, but we will not have the formal presentation. Just this evening, working with the council, we've made a decision to cancel the 4th of July celebration that we've done for so many years, and so many people appreciate. But gosh, it's just, it's not one of those things that you can ask people to sit in their cars. It's not going to happen. We're going to be out there elbow to elbow and having fun, you know, using the playgrounds and those kind of things. So we're just not comfortable. And please understand that, you know, 4th of July is a long way out there from the standpoint of maybe a governor's order coming out or something. But it's the planning that has to happen. And we can't just, you know, throw that thing together. It takes time. So we're having to make decisions right now on whether or not to go forward with the power techniques and those kind of things. So it's just not something we're comfortable doing. So the 4th of July celebration will be canceled for 2020, and we'll go forward in 2021. Hopefully, it'll be a better year for us. Did want to mention, we've talked about road projects tonight. We do have several road projects that are still very active in our community. And Jefferson Pike, we think will be started by the end of the year. Sam Ridley Parkway, if you've been out there recently, it's getting a little tight. The concrete barriers are going up. They're up on one side. They'll be putting them up on the other side here in the next few days. So just be patient. You know, as you're out there amongst the traffic, just be patient. It will get better. It may get a little worse before it gets a little better, so be patient.
I was going to say, just to respond to that, I've seen some stuff on social media and all that, but we've got to go through these growing pains to be able to get better on the other side, and know that we get just as frustrated as each one of you when we're out there on the road. But just know, the end product is going to be so much better for the community.
Do the best you can to use some of those alternative routes, Rock Springs, some of those back entrances into Kroger, Home Depot, places like that, as much as you can. Genie Lane, you know, we're still working on getting some extensions of Genie Lane done with some of the other new development, but it is still an option to get off there at Old Nashville Highway and go back on Genie Lane to get into some of those areas. Nolan Drive, happy to report to you right now. We've had some good weather finally, and got some dry weather, although we've had some spotty rains. But Nolan Drive, we've got asphalt down. We should be putting the top coat down here in the next week or so. We do have a projected end date to have that project substantially completed by the end of this month. And that road will be opened back up. The only thing we want, we've made the decision to do is the landscaping. Just because we're going into the heat of the summer, we're going to pull the landscaping portion out and wait till the fall, because we do not have irrigation along that road right now. And there's no sense in planting these trees that are just going to die if we don't keep them watered. So substantial completion, road open, sidewalk completed, everything but the landscaping will be done probably by the end of this month is.
You do have the statue of Steve Sullivan ordered toward the middle of the roundabout, right?
It's a stackable statue, and I've got all the council and the mayor. It's like a totem code, so.
I'm not sure where that came from, but I think it was intended at you.
Yeah, he said Steve Sullivan. I'm pretty sure it was intended to me.
I didn't say Steve Sullivan.
It'd be a statue of me giving HG a salute.
Okay. Hoorah.
With a directional.
This way is north. The last one is Enan Springs, where you're making good, it's amazing to go out there right now because they've taken a lot of that dirt out that was atop the hilltop. And if you go down Enan Springs or down Rocky Fork and look back up, you can begin to see that, that road develop. They, they are still saying by the end of July, August, they're gonna be done out there. They are, they are working night and day out there. It's, it's been amazing to watch them.
I drove it, I drove it yesterday. They've actually switched the traffic over to the new portion. And it was a little odd when I first would ride the curve and there was, I was on a different road. I was like, hey, this looks a little different. They are definitely making progress.
We've got some new supervision from Jones Brothers on these projects, and they are moving forward. So, again, I say all that to say, folks, be patient with us. It's just gonna take a lot of patience as we get through these road projects. And, you know, you saw the list, there's several more coming behind these that we're working on in the next year's budget, in the next year's budget. So, thank you, that's all I've got, Mayor.
Ms. Diane, anything? You don't wanna sing? Not tonight?
My throat's-
Throat, okay, a little scratchy tonight, okay, got it. Well, we'll look at that for next time, how about that? Does that work? Oh, you'll practice, okay, good. Raquel, anything?
Happy belated Mother's Day to all of the mothers. Also, appreciation to law enforcement officials here in the town of Smyrna. Thank you for all that you do. And I also wanna echo what you were saying, Brian, with the staff as far as going through the COVID-19 safer-at-home period, and all of the work that staff has done to keep the town going, all of the extra hours that you've put in, that the directors have put in, that Jeff and Kathy have put in, thank you for all of that. I know it's, it's been a lot, it's been quite a bit. And y'all are working all hours of the day and night. So, I just wanna say, I appreciate all that you've had to do during that time, or during this time. And also Rex, to you and your staff for the first reading of the budget. Thank you for all of your hard work, as well as Brian, and our assistant town managers sitting in on the, all of the discussions and coming up with this budget. I know you've worked really hard on it, and I'm very appreciative of you being very cautious and taking a very conservative look at it. And lastly, I actually wanna say one more thing, and this one, this is a personal thing. I wanna say congratulations to my daughter Nora, who was scheduled to graduate from high school on May the 8th. And she is homeschooled and had been homeschooled from kindergarten all the way through. And she was not able to have her graduation because there were only four people in their class, and they did not want to move it to June, when the rest of the Rutherford County schools were moving it. So, we had a kind of a impromptu kind of a ceremony for her. So, I do want to acknowledge and recognize her for graduating from high school.
And congratulations to you too, because if she was homeschooled, that was on you, so.
Yeah, and she's graduated one year early, so I'm very excited about that. And she will be attending MTSU in the fall, so.
Great. Todd, I didn't see you back there behind Ms. Diane, anything from you tonight? Hey, She?
Congratulations to all of the graduates, Nora especially, but all the, all the graduates of the recent year who didn't get to finish their classes, but nevertheless, still got to graduate. In the last couple of weeks, we lost a Smyrna citizen who, well-known throughout the community. Over the years, he's been a real visible individual. And Rusty Griffin passed away. And I don't know how many people, you know, go on Facebook, but on Facebook over the last few years, or last few weeks, there's been videos of, of some of Rusty's highlights, of his commercials and things like that. He ran Regal Furniture for many, many years. And you can watch those and see exactly how entertaining Rusty was. So many kids throughout the years have played on Regal Furniture athletic teams. I mean, he was a great supporter of the community. And Rusty was also, him and Josh, Josh McCollum, were founders of the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association, SIMA. And, you know, as, as, one of the things that SIMA is involved in is of course promoting the local businesses, the independent businesses. And, you know, over time, we always talk about those. And one of the reasons that we talk about those is, is to keep our revenue at home. And going through the budget tonight, we see that our local revenue, our local sales tax is such an integral part of what our budget is. But, you know, these days, you know, the plea is a little bit different. The plea these days is to support your local businesses so that they stay here, so that they do not go out of business. They need you now more than ever. And, you know, these are tough times for all of us, and more especially for the, the local independent businesses because, you know, their, their survival depends on our community's support. And, you know, just shop local, shop local.
Anything else, HG?
Be kind. Thank you.
Was that directed at Mayor in general?
Probably. That was to the community in general, to be kind to everybody else. You know, things are kinda tough sometimes, and, and everybody's tired of staying home. And the shortness of, of the nerves can be involved. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Raquel, congratulations on Nora. She's such a wonderful young lady, and I know how proud you are of her, and well-deserving. Also wanna recognize one in my family, Jordan Warwick. He's graduated from Blackman, and he'll be joining Nora at MTSU. He's been accepted, we found out this week, so we're really proud of him. Again, to the town employees, thank you for all your work that you've done. It's, it's not easy. Unfortunately, there are so many positions where you, you can't go home and, and stay home, and you're kinda putting yourself out there. Ms. Diane, from your staff, to planning, to coast, utilities. You know, our first responders saw an accident the other day, and, you know, police, fire, EMS, all out there, and, you know, kinda putting themselves out there on the limb because you just never know. So, you know what, HG, you're right. Be kind, and, and we'll navigate through this, and we'll all come out stronger on the other end. Thank you.
Jerry?
Well, everything pretty much has been said that, that I have written down. But happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. And we certainly appreciate you all. Also wanted to say, of course, congratulations to Nora and to all the graduates out there. You know, so it's been talked about so much about, they don't get to have their graduation, they didn't get to have their prom, there's so many different things that they didn't get to do. And so, just want you to know that we appreciate you, and we know you guys will be the, the leaders that'll be taking roles in, in the future. But certainly appreciate that. My daughter-in-law, congratulations to her. She graduated with her master's degree this year as well, so I wanna say congratulations to her. And it was also her first Mother's Day too, so she had, I think she had a real good, good week, good year. The, as we've mentioned before, Brian and your team, all the employees here in Smyrna, how they have stepped up and done the things that they've done to get us through this, this issue. Rex, for helping us with the budget and doing a great job, as you and your group always do. And appreciate that so much. And then lastly, I just wanna say thank you to the healthcare workers. They're out there now on, you know, they're on the front lines as well. We take them for granted, and I think this has probably taught us not to do that. So, I just wanna say thank you to them, so. Mayor, that's all I have.
Great. Steve?
My turn. Congratulations to Nora. I will try to make a point of visiting her at work and let, tell her myself, but congratulations to, to all of you.
Don't you visit there nightly?
Not Sonic nightly, I get my ice cream usually somewhere else.
But nightly?
Nightly ice cream, yes. Yeah. So, anyway, I don't know why my eating habits came into this. I got a, not a lot of things. You know, obviously with everything going on, HG and Tim kinda hit on it. Tempers are a little high, things are a little stressful. I've been seeing it from more emails and, and conversations with citizens, as well as just generally in the public. Keep in mind that literally, as bad as, I'm, I kinda hate the cliche words, that we're all in this together. Keep in mind that you're not alone in this, and that we're all going through it too. So, just, just keep that in mind when you get frustrated, that everyone is a certain level of frustration at this point, and irritability probably from just their comfort and their desires being infringed on. So, just keep that in mind. Take the opportunity, spend more time with family, enjoy the, the time you've got because things will go back to normal. And before long, you'll be wishing that you had time to sit at home and, and spend time with your family. So, just keep that in mind. Speaking of that, June, the first week of June, I will be out of the area. I'm gonna be traveling to California. We found out last week that my son Kevin has been recommended for promotion to non-commission officer. So, it's very impressive for two years. I was in the Marine Corps for almost, right at four years, and I was the same rank when I got out. So, he's doing it about a year and a half faster than I did, so.
That says something.
It does. And I wasn't a great Marine, but he must be better than I was, that's all I'll say. Anyway, so we're gonna get to go out. They, they have allowed me the honor of pinning him, which is very cool. And in the, in the military, if someone with the same rank or higher can pin your rank on you. So, he asked them if I could come do it, and they said sure. So, it's kinda cool that I get to come give him that rank, so I'll be there the first week of June. Memorial Day is coming, I think we meet one more time before then, or maybe not, I'm not sure. Yeah, I think it is, right before. Yeah, so we'll cover Memorial Day at the workshop. I think that's all I've got.
Great. Mark?
Proud dad moment, so congratulations to you and Kevin and Pam.
Yeah, it is, it's something I never thought I would do, or get to do, and-
Wish him well for all of us.
It's really cool.
Proud mom moment for Nora. Congratulations to Nora, she's worked hard to get out a year early. She's had a good teacher, wouldn't you say? So, congratulations to both of them. All graduates, of course, it's been mentioned, you know, they're missing out a little bit on all the fanfare of a formal graduation, a formal prom. You know, HG, Tim and I are sitting up here, and we're kinda missing out on our 45th annual high school reunion.
Mine's only 25, I don't know-
Sure, well, this is why you failed math, HG.
I said cat ear.
So-
I thought you said you were gonna say you missed your prom, and you were gonna-
I didn't miss any proms.
Wear in, wear prom attire next time and show us your dancing.
Well, we could do that. If you all were, are game for that, I'd issue a challenge, we could all-
I'd say in baby blue tuxedo with ruffled-
I agree.
Yeah, I actually did wear one of those. We, we, yeah, that too. We might need to get back on track here. Diane, sing, please. You're on, you ready? Mayor, just so you know, the back of your hair looked really nice tonight. First time I've, we've got to sit back here and witness that, so.
Great.
Looked good, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Rest in peace Rusty. We're all gonna miss Rusty around here, and a character that's a little bit larger than life, as, as we all knew him, and a lot of fun. You mentioned his Regal Furniture commercials, and I actually had a chance to go back and review some of those this week, and he still made me laugh.
Well, you know what, a lot of people don't know it, but when you saw at the Titans football games, when you saw the Santa Claus there, that was Rusty.
Yep.
With his shorts and beard and everything, I mean, he was a, he was a well-known character.
And I know a lot of people are gonna miss his spirit around here, I know I will for one, so. Rest in peace Rusty. Rex, again, thank you to you and your staff for putting together the budget and spending all the time, Todd, Jeff, all of you. Tonight, before our meeting, we actually sat down and, and with our counselor here, Jeff, and did his annual review, his evaluation. Jeff, I wanna tell you how much publicly, since we all got to say this privately to you, well, not privately, it was a public meeting, but nonetheless, we were there. And just want you to know publicly, so the people out here can understand, the work that you do behind the scenes that keeps a lot of the town going, and the things you do legally that helps us operate, you and your whole staff, we all have said our appreciations to you. So, I just wanna reiterate that as a group tonight again, publicly, so that you'll know that we really value you, and we know you do a wonderful job for the town, so. To our police and fire departments, we have had the, last week, we had the town painted red, so to speak, and this week, we have the town painted blue. And that's to honor our firemen and women, and our police men and women, and for the work that they do in law enforcement. Last thing I wanna mention, tonight's a special night for a dear friend of mine, and I know probably a lot of you, and that is Jeanette Gwynn and Annette Taylor. They're twins, and both of them's birthday is today. And so, I just wanna wish them publicly a happy birthday. They are figures about town. A lot of people may, may know Jeanette and/or Annette. Annette's husband Jimmy Taylor was the admiral that helped us get the Captain Coos Memorial mounted and launched. He was an integral part of getting that done. So, they are very intertwined with the town of Smyrna here, and we, we think a lot of them all. And so, I just wanna wish her a happy birthday publicly tonight, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Great. Brian, I know you had something else?
Mayor, I, I did get something from the chief of police. The academy, right now appears will be opening back in July. And one last thing that just, I had it on my thing, and I just missed it. Just wanted to say to Britt Reed, happy anniversary and condolences for all the misery that he's put up with over the last 13 years. He's earned his wings in heaven.
I would, I would definitely agree with that. He, I definitely got the better end of the deal on-
Happy anniversary to you guys.
Thank you, thank you. So, a couple of items. Our Smyrna Depot Farmer's Market will open on Saturday, May the 23rd. There are gonna be some modifications. Vendors will sell food items only. Shoppers are encouraged to adhere to the CDC guidelines, including social distancing, wearing masks, and frequent hand washing. The depot will be available for restrooms only, all vendors will be outside. If you are sick, we ask that you please stay home. We are also asking that- Do we have more? No?
Yeah, I think there's, is there another slide?
But we're also asking that, rather than bringing the entire family, if you will please send one member of the family to the farmer's market. We also, Brian, I'm going off memory here, so we're asking that people not pick up the produce and things like that. Let the vendors take care of that. There will be social distancing of the vendors themselves, am I correct? Is what else?
And we're asking them not to bring their pets into the market this year. And then also children, you know, you just have to, we understand, but please, again, try to send one person from the family to do your shopping.
Right. Okay, I have just a couple of things. Brian, we talked a little bit about what we're doing as a town from doing business with the town. What are our procedures at this point?
Yeah, we're continued, all of our staff is back. We are continuing to keep the offices closed to the public. Everything that we've been able to do with the modifications of using the telephone, the drive-through service, and/or the computer is working. So, continue to, to work with the town in that manner right now. We're anticipating possibly opening around the first of the month.
Okay. And all of that will be dependent on numbers and, and all of that?
Yeah, we're gonna continue to track the numbers in the governor's order. And then even after we open back up, we plan on leaving some of the modifications we've made with the utilities and with permits and those kinda things to limit the folks having to come into the office. We're gonna continue to maintain those new work, workarounds.
And just so everyone knows, we will continue to follow the governor's orders as to what the town of Smyrna does in response to the COVID-19. Also, in regards to the Smyrna farmers, to the farmer's market, we want you all to understand, we want this to be successful, we want it to be positive, but if we see after the first time that it can't be done with protecting- time that it can't be done with protecting our citizens, then we may see that we may not be able to continue with it. So we need your help in the town in helping us to be successful by practicing social distancing and those guidelines by the CDC. Also want to give a quick shout-out to Dana from the Health Department and her staff. They have done a fabulous job. They are testing in Murfreesboro and Smyrna, but the amount of testing they're doing in Murfreesboro on a daily basis is unbelievable. And I know she's had quite a bit on her, but I just want to thank Dana and her staff for all they do. And last but not least, y'all have talked about your graduates, and we have one in our family as well. My sister's daughter, Mary Lee Slate, is graduating from Stewart's Creek High School. It's hard to believe that.
She's already graduated.
I know that she's graduating, so congratulations, Mary Lee, and I know you're going to go on to do great things, so. Anything else? Good to see all of you guys in person, not on Facebook and not through a computer screen. I think we, we are all social creatures, and we all want that human interaction. What we ask of you as citizens of the town of Smyrna, to have personal responsibility to, when you're out in public, practice those social distancing guidelines and practice those things that keep you and your family safe. If you go into a business that is not doing something that you think they need to do, you don't have to shop there. You don't have to eat there. You can choose to turn around and leave. And so we want you to do what is best for you and your family. I know that Smyrna is a strong community. We do best when there are times of adversity, and I know we will pull through this. We will be a stronger community. We will be a stronger county. We will be a stronger state and a stronger nation once we get through this. So thank you all for continuing to work with us here in the town of Smyrna, and I look forward to seeing everyone at our next meeting. Anything else? Nothing else? We're adjourned.